Call this meeting of the York County Council to order. Councilmember Kristy Cox to give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the many blessings you've given us, for the freedoms that we have in this country, and for those who put their lives on the line to ensure that we have those freedoms. I pray that you would bless them and their families. At this time, I come to you humbly praying for unity in this country, on this county council, and wisdom be imparted to our leaders. I would ask that your hand guide us in our decisions tonight, and that the people's interests come first. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For oath of office, would Mark Schumpert, Brian Wecaster, and would those two please Under appearances, Tracy Osborne. Ms. Osborne? She may be outside. We're going to give her a minute. Under public forum, we will call you when you come up, please give us your name and address, and please remember you are limited to two minutes. At the two-minute mark, I typically count X amount of seconds, then I just cut you off. So please be mindful of that. Caitlin Boyle.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Boyle, and my address is 826 Front Street in Fort Mill, South Carolina. I am a homeowner and a business owner in unincorporated York County. Ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to take a step back and look at this situation from a 30,000-foot view. Is this just a mask? Because if you pass a mandatory mask ordinance for York County, you are making a medical decision for both individuals and businesses throughout the county. We have a right to make medical decisions for ourselves, and that includes whether or when to wear a mask. Many of you on this board are conservatives who fundamentally disagree with excessive government interference in our lives. Does the need to limit government overreach evaporate when there's a virus spreading? Some of you on this board are Democrats who have rallied around the cry of "my body, my choice." Does "my body, my choice" only apply when a woman wishes to terminate a pregnancy? Does her body otherwise belong to the group and to the state? I fear that you are not looking at the long-term consequences of signaling to the citizens of York County that you are okay with making medical choices for the rest of us. I also want you to consider how this mandate would possibly be enforced. This is not a good use of the sheriff's time or resources. The sheriff will field countless calls chasing down violators and will be unable to focus on actual crime and actual social work issues. A mask mandate is a slippery slope that we may never crawl back up. I hope that you are not going to mandate something for the rest of us that six out of seven of you are not doing yourselves today. When we trade liberty for a false sense of security, we lose both. Thank you.
Excuse me, everyone. We don't clap. We don't do that. And we will, and just ask you, no commenting back. We're here to listen, and we will give you that respect, and y'all just please do that. Candace Wallett?
Wallett. Hi. My name is Candace Wallett. I live in Rock Hill, 650 Mallory Drive. I have been with my family, residents of York County, for nine years. My husband has been a teacher at the Applied Technology Center for that amount of time. I'm actually more encouraged to be here tonight than I thought I would be, as I see you without masks. So I'm here today to strongly urge you to vote no on any mandate for mask-wearing in our county. If we are here not because of some political agendas, but because of increasing positive cases in York County, can we please talk about why there are increased cases? I hope that I'm already telling you something that you know, but if you don't, a person can count as positive without even taking a COVID-19 test, based on symptoms alone. This is a fact. Two, people are being incentivized to take COVID-19 tests by getting McDonald's gift cards, and those people can come back with a positive test not even knowing that they had the disease or symptoms. Three, every retest of COVID-19 is counted as a new case. Four, presumptive positives. Someone that I personally know went in for allergy symptoms, came out, and they said it was close enough, so they counted that as a case. And lastly, we all know, every person in this room knows, that there are false positives, faulty tests all over the globe, and faulty reporting. So I'm sorry that I'm so passionate about this, but I have three young kids, and it's my job to stand up for their future, and this is ludicrous. The inflated numbers increase fear and panic, which is the reason that we're here tonight talking about this. Please say no to this mandate and allow York County residents to make the best decision for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Tabakman?
Tabakman. I'm Laura Tabakman. I live at 771 Julia Street, Fort Mill. It is the government's responsibility to protect the constitutional rights of its citizens and not enforce health mandates. My family and I moved to South Carolina because we believed it was a state that protected individual freedoms. Masks are not a one-size-fits-all. There are many medical and mental health issues that many people have wearing a mask, some of that they don't even know. The deaths from this virus have been overcounted. If you die with a positive test for COVID, even if you die from stage four cancer or from a car accident, it is counted as a COVID death, and this has been mandated by the federal government. Furthermore, this virus has over a 99% survival. Moreover, masks do not work. The particles of this virus are too small to be blocked by masks, as is evidenced in many scientific studies. Hundreds of doctors and scientists around the world have come out, often in jeopardy of their own careers, to speak out against the mask mandates and the lockdowns. They have spoken out and stated that the government response worldwide has been overreaching, and that this response will do more damage than the virus. Health is an individual responsibility, not the government's. Thank you.
Heather Cromwell?
I'm Heather Cromwell. My address is 647 Sixth Baxter Crossing in Fort Mill, and I'm here to urge you to vote against the mask mandate. As I say, the numbers just don't match up with the widespread panic. Based on the numbers this morning in York County alone, 2,390 people have tested positive in our county. That's only 0.8% of our county's population, less than 1%. And of those, 14 people have died. That's 0.5%, which means there's a 99.5 recovery rate. That means 99.2% of our county has not contracted the virus, and 99.995% of our county has not died from the virus. Even with that, though, we can't even be sure that these numbers are accurate. We've seen way too many instances lately where people don't even test, who didn't even test, received positive test results, and stories of nurses sending in blank swabs and having them test positive, and stories of labs revealing their numbers were wrong, and the same person taking multiple tests until they get a negative, and then all the positive tests for one individual are counted. All of these point to the positive numbers being way inflated. And then throw in the fact that no matter what patients actually die from, it seems to be labeled a COVID death. There's no way to trust these numbers. I got caught up in the media's hype about how contagious this virus is until it started to affect people in my own personal life. I've known a handful of people who've tested positive for COVID, some with symptoms and some without. There hasn't been a single person from within their families that they live with or within their close circles of friends who contracted the virus. God made our bodies to fight, to be able to fight off viruses by having strong immune systems. Our immune systems can be boosted by exercise, healthy eating, sleep, and minimizing stress. If this is truly about our health, maybe we should start mandating those things. And lastly, it's my right and my freedom to make the choice for myself. To start it off by saying it's just two weeks, it's just to flatten the curve, and now we're saying it's just a mask. So what's the next thing? It's just a vaccine, and then it's just a chip? It's a slippery slope that I don't think we should be going down, and we have to draw the line in the sand and make a stand now. Thank you.
Robert, is it Sweet?
My name is Robert Sweet. I live at 5110 Green Meadow Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, and I'm a retired surgeon. I didn't come here to talk about COVID-19, but I'd like to reinforce all the things that the previous speakers mentioned. They're all correct in what they say, and anyone who looks at this in any depth will agree with them. I came to talk about another issue, and the issue that I want to talk about is the development which is happening right adjacent to the property which I own. It was rezoned last year, and it was rezoned from agricultural, I think, to residential. Now, when that happens, this has a very significant impact on the people who already live in York County, and these people need to be represented too, not just the developers. And I've got a question about the developer who's developing that land. This guy came up out of Georgia to develop that land. We don't have developers right here in York County who can develop land? I think we do. So why was that guy allowed to come and develop that land adjacent to where I live? What he's done is he's cut down every single tree back there on that land, and that has implications too. For those of you who do not know, trees give off oxygen, and they take in carbon dioxide, and they give off oxygen. Human beings do just the opposite of that. So, you know, this has significant impact upon our environment when we allow that to happen. What's happening right now is exactly what we said was going to happen the night the rezoning vote was taken, and it was a razor-thin vote, as you may recall. The water is coming down right off that hill where they cut down all the trees, right onto my property and into our lake, which is on our property. Not only is it coming down, but it's coming down so heavily that I have a shed in the back of my property, and the water comes down, it's going into my shed now, since they cut down all the trees and all the other vegetation there, and I've got stuff stored in my shed.
Dr. Sweet, I apologize, I have to, I counted to about 25 once the two minutes hit. If you will speak to someone in our compliance, David, who would be the best person?
Contact me.
If you will contact Mr. Hudson, we will have someone come out and take a look at this water issue that you're talking about, and certainly you are welcome to come back, and you can ask to appear before us, and then you have unlimited time. But unfortunately, during this session, I can only give you two minutes.
Well, the water just came down heavily recently, and it was above my ankles and going into my shed, and it's very disconcerting.
Please get Mr. Hudson. He will help you, sir. Brandon Guffey?
Steve.
We'll give him a second. Brandon Guffey?
How are y'all doing? Brandon Guffey, 2671 Camelot Drive, small business owner in York County and a homeowner. I actually didn't even realize I was putting my name on a piece of paper to talk. I thought I was just signing in, so. But I didn't want anybody to think I wasn't showing up either. As far as the mask ordinance, I am not for it. I believe that individual businesses should be able to make that decision themselves as opposed to it being mandated through the government. Our cities are already passing these ordinance, and most of the businesses, restaurants and all of that, are located within the city. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mary Williams?
I believe that you all have a copy of this graph that I passed out earlier, and you can see this is from the South Carolina Department of Health and Environment Commission, and I printed this out today. And that spike that you see on the far right, that blue spike on the far right, is yesterday's statistics alone for York County compared to the yellow is in Lancaster and green is in Chester. And I forgot to say my address, 313 Squirrel Lane, Lake Wiley, South Carolina. That was bad protocol. Good evening, county council members. I'm here tonight to request your support for the York County Council's emergency ordinance declaring requirement to wear face coverings in public places. The number of coronaviruses are on the rise in South Carolina and York County. Yesterday, the State Health Department reported a single-day record high of 158 cases. That's that blue spike on what I handed out. The State Department estimates the reach of the virus is actually several times higher than that. There are more actual cases than those confirmed by tests, contrary to what people previously said before me. The Rock Hill ZIP Code of 29732 has 555 confirmed cases. However, the Health Department estimates it's actually six times higher than that amount for 3,612 cases. We don't know, what we don't know is downright scary. COVID is a national and state emergency. The governing leadership of Rock Hill and Fort Mill have already done the right thing by mandating masks for the safety of their communities. Unincorporated Lake Wiley, in which I live, is relying on you to protect the right, do the right thing, and protect the residents of our community and the folks who work there. Council leaders, I implore you to have courage, to have a backbone, and to do the right thing and pass the mandate this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Williams?
Hello, I'm here to speak on behalf of mandating mask-wearing, as I'm doing right now. I didn't bring a bunch of facts with me, and maybe I should have. Facts from all over the world that will tell you that this disease, this virus, this plague is actually real. As much as people want to call it a hoax, it's real. I can bring you statistics on what are they doing in Europe. They're charging people up to $150 for not wearing a mask, and they've put a stop to most of their problems. They're reopening. They're going in the opposite direction as we are. But I didn't bring those facts. I want to talk to you about the fact that this is a life and death issue. This isn't, you know, I've been here many times, and we talk about politics, and we talk about contractors, and we talk about money, and we talk about a lot of things. None of them compare to what we're talking about today, folks. We're talking about life and death issues. My doctors tell me if I get the disease, I'm probably dead. That's life and death, serious issues. Some people say that mask-wearing is an infringement on their rights. Come on, get a life, and don't take mine. If we believed this was true, what about the seatbelt laws? They'll get a ticket for not wearing a seatbelt. What about speeding laws? That infringes on their right to go as fast as they want, but we're going to stop them and give them a ticket and maybe take their license away. So there, if I brought you a list of everything that we think infringes on our liberty, it would be pages and a book long. So it's a ridiculous thing to say that this infringes on their liberties. What we're talking about today is saving lives.
Mr. Williams, I'm afraid I have to cut you off. You've hit the two-minute mark. I gave you a little extra time. Thank you, sir. Scott Hesterman?
Scott Hesterman? 1129 Fenwick Court, Clover. I came in wearing this, but I had to take it off, sitting down in the outside waiting room, because I got winded. I can't breathe. This is for show. It means nothing. And if you're really doing it right, you would have someone come out here and swab this between speakers like some towns in Texas do, but you don't. And let's see, one, two, three, four, five. What's wrong with the rest of you? You don't agree with this? All right. Intent does not matter. Words and legal definitions do. A poorly-written ordinance is sure to result in abuse on all sides, including violence against alleged noncompliance. Whoever wrote this needs to be barred from writing more, and I don't know which one of you it is. There's no legal definitions in here. You got to cover the face. Which parts? A ski mask covers almost the entire face. Does that count? It doesn't say. A bridal veil covers the whole face, but provides no protection at all. Women's makeup covers their whole face, provides no protection at all. There's unspecified medical exemptions. Who's authorized to give a medical exemption, and on what grounds? Can I just say, "I exempt myself. I have a medical condition," and you can't ask me, because that would be a HIPAA violation, and you should know that? So, I exempt myself. I'm not wearing a mask. My choice, not yours. In the law, it doesn't say what kind it has to be, but it does mention cloth somewhere in there. Does it have to be cloth? What kind of cloth? Is this good enough? What about a full hazmat suit? A hazmat suit isn't cloth at all. Would that not meet the legal definition because you want it to be cloth? You have written a poor law. If you want masks, write it properly. I'm opposed to the masks. It should be voluntary.
Mr. Hesterman?
Why don't you write it correctly?
Mr. Hesterman, thank you. I apologize. You've hit the two-minute, and again, I gave you a little extra time. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that. You should wipe that down now.
Vicki Atkinson. Ms. Atkinson. Who may not want to touch the dais, but Ms. Atkinson.
Hi, my name is Vicki Atkinson. I live at 593 Starlight Drive in Fort Mill, South Carolina. I'm here today because I'm a 63-year-old woman, and I do not expect my government to take care of me and keep me safe. That's not your job. That's my Lord's job, is to keep me safe and well. I do not understand why the cities and the counties would overrule what the governor has already said. He said there wouldn't be a mask mandate. Why would you do that? He said it's not enforceable, and it's not. I was many places today, and there was no, there was a lot of people without masks in the city. I recently communicated with a city council member in Fort Mill. He said he's going to have a procedure done next week, and it required five tests, and if one showed that he was positive, it would be five new cases. You can't believe these numbers. These numbers are ridiculous, and they're not true. And if you mandate that we wear masks, that's wrong. And the governor today in Georgia actually did an executive order that the cities and counties cannot do mask mandates. And if you pass this, I will be talking to the governor, because this is wrong, and you should consider how we feel about this, how we feel it's not right for us, and I think it's wrong. Thank you.
My understanding, there may be a few other people who were not here in time to sign up. Just come up front and just make sure you state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Tracy Osborne. I live in 2410 Apartment F, Salines Road at Rock Hill, and I appreciate the time to be heard today. I have heard the statistics that were, that people have run over, and I completely agree with it. You can't really depend on these numbers, because even as Cheryl Atkinson noted in an article this weekend, in Florida, someone died of a motorcycle accident, and because he tested positive for COVID, he's counted as a COVID death. And that's just inaccuracy, really, but that's what's happening. That being said, I've done some calculations according to the CDC's websites and their statistics, and only, only 0.42% of the US population has died from COVID, according to those numbers. In the flu, we had the flu in 2018 and 2019, and there were 0.0104% deaths with the flu. With South Carolina's population is around, is 5,148,714, and we have had 1,147 deaths. That's 0.02% of South Carolina's population. I don't understand, I can't see that these numbers support a mask mandate. If we were at 10%... If we were at 10% or just astronomical percentages, and people were dropping like flies, it would be different, and I would not consider it an invasion of my personal liberties. But I would like to close with some of our most adored doctor... I mean, our most adored... What we live by here. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. And I would say, emphasize that to secure the rights is why the governments were instituted.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Yes, sir. Again, name and address, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, everyone. My name is Eric Abrams, and I work in York County at 123 North White Street, Fort Mill. I'm here to request your support for the emergency mask ordinance. We need your help. But the recent understanding of science on this is clear. There remains a lot of confusion, and we need our government leadership to step in to help ensure the safety of our citizens. Leave it to the businesses to enforce, when in practice, businesses have a financial disincentive to not turn customers away. Public health should not be left to individuals and should not be left to individual businesses to solve. Only government can solve public health problems, especially one as widespread as COVID. I don't understand how a public health initiative has become politicized. Statements about 95% recovery rate, someone earlier said, while is a positive sign, ignores the human cost of those 5% who don't recover. It's saying those tens of thousands of people who will die later this year don't matter. Doesn't sound very pro-life to me. There are complaints about removing individual liberty. I'd like to argue otherwise. If everyone wears a mask in all public settings, we could get our lives back to normal again, and we can get our economy back together again. A previous speaker mentioned car safety. We are to imagine turn signal lights were once novel and contested when they became mandatory, yet now are standard on every make and model, and we get fined if we don't use them. Public health problems require the government to mandate solutions. We rely on our government for safe drinking water and clean air. We can work in partnership with our government to keep us safe when the scope is outside of individuals and businesses to solve on their own. I need your help. Our workplaces have a patchwork of policies differing from each other. We need consistent, across-the-board mask mandates in all public settings, including offices, to slow the spread, save lives, and get all of our freedoms back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One more? All right.
Sorry, I'm super nervous. I've never talked before. So am I shaking? I'm super sorry. Teresa Breakfield, 1242 Melrose Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, 29732. If you're immune compromised, stay home. You can get your groceries delivered now. There's no reason for you to come out. If I have to wear a mask to protect other people's health, where does it stop? Do I go within to their doctor's appointments? Can they not eat McDonald's anymore? Do I tell them when to sleep? That's not fair. Their health is their business. It's not up to me to make sure that they are healthy. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're good? All right. Consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Public hearing. Rezoning action. Public hearing and consider first reading on case number 20-06, tax map number 726000071 to rezone from UD to RD1, 1.09 acres located at 359 Mark Trail Lane in Fort Mill. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against? Is there anyone in favor? I'll give them a second. There are motion to close public hearing. So move?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. About a motion for first reading?
Motion to approve first reading.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel, to hold a public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, Stormwater Management and Sediment Control Code, so as to amend the county designee primarily responsible for coordination and enforcement of the ordinance, to amend the exemption for single-family residences or their accessory buildings, which are separately built and not part of a larger common plan, to amend the exemption for agricultural structures, to provide for a new exemption for emergency repairs, to amend and add definitions, to amend sub... to amend submittal requirements for the simplified stormwater management and sediment control plan, to amend provisions for basic grading and sediment control requirements, to amend regulatory inspection and enforcement penalty provisions related thereto, to amend the provisions for the appeals process, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is anyone here who would like to speak against? Anyone like to speak in favor? Yeah, we're fast on that time. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes.
Move to approve first reading.
Any discussion? Mr. Winkler?
Just a quick question for county management. I believe that this addresses some of the concerns I've had with some of the simplified site plans and stuff in my district.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think it does. We've had meetings with... It's a small group of developers, but we have met with them. And I think we heard from them some very strong opinions several months ago. We did make some changes, and I'm not going to say that it went to 100% of the way they wanted, but we've had some very good feedback from several of them, and I think this accomplishes the minimum of what they... their basic concerns. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel, to hold a public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155, zoning code, to add a definition for warehousing, wholesale, and distribution establishments, to provide for such establishments as accessory uses to a manufacturing facility, to amend the table of permitted and special exception uses to require a special exception for warehousing, wholesale, and distribution establishments of a certain size, to establish conditions of approval for such a special exception, to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Move close.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I move to approve with the following amendment, that the development standards be applied countywide, and any reference to the zoning board be modified to achieve that result, and that special exception requirement apply only to the I-77 corridor overlay.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Cox?
Just about a month ago, I believe. Time's flying, but I think it was about a month ago, this council unanimously approved the use of the pending ordinance doctrine to be applied to effectuate the purposes of the I-77 corridor overlay. One of the purposes of that overlay was to make sure that special exceptions were applied in that district, given the amount of... an excessive amount of distribution centers that were there. And this is something that's critically important, to make sure that we attract quality business, gold standard business, and not just be the, you know, the area for the next place where all the trucks are going to go. Obviously, we need them. This ordinance goes a long way to helping us make sure that we don't put them right next door to residences, and that we play a little bit better role in making sure that our infrastructure can withstand it, and that it's a better place to live, which is what we all want. So I'm excited to see that we're moving forward with this and that we're going to follow through with what we did a month ago.
Mr. Winkler?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Councilmember Cox for working with me on this, because I had some concerns about it as it was presented earlier. I am one who, representing District 3 in the western side of the county, you know, our tax base is not what it is in Rock Hill and Fort Mill. And we can use distribution centers and other employers in this part of the county and use that tax income. So I had concerns with making it mandatory that there had to be a special exception for it to be anywhere in the county. I support 100% her district and her small-area plan, what she needs to do in her district. And I have no problem with improving the standard some and saying that, you know, they can't do the loading docks out the front side for aesthetics and setbacks, that type thing, which is why I support that standard countywide. But I do not support saying that the special exception countywide. I want people to know that if they're looking, you know, we're wide open in District 3, and we'll welcome them in, if it's distribution or otherwise. We need that tax base here. So with the amendment she made, that's why I seconded it, and I support it.
Dr. Blackwell?
You know, I certainly understand Mrs. Cox's concerns with this, and I agree with her logic. The only issue I have, and I need staff to remind me again, whether it's Michael or David, I got to have my memory shaken on the pending ordinance situation, because as y'all all know, I despise that ordinance. I feel like it's not transparent to the citizens, and it essentially, on first reading, kicks it into a ordinance. And it's now an ordinance. And we're supposed to go through three readings, so I've got to have some clarification on why we did that. I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but...
Well, I think I can address the whys, as it was a... My understanding is a request of counsel to be done that way for this particular issue. And so I believe that's passed unanimously when we talked about the small-area plan. So that was the direction we took with this. Now, as far as the legal piece of that, you're right, it does kick in the requirements of the ordinance immediately. And we have second and third reading to go in order to make any changes that we feel like need to be made. But it would not allow any warehousing to go through without meeting the requirements of this ordinance starting tomorrow.
Maybe I should have said, maybe you can remind me why I let it... why I voted for it. Unanimous consent, because it's like, man, that's something I just really don't like. I mean, maybe Ms. Cox really sweet-talked me or something that night, so I just kind of let it go. But, boy, I hate it when you pass something that's enforceable on first reading. But, Michael, can you help my memory?
It's enforceable upon publication of the notice of public hearing.
Right.
So that was noticed, and that's passed. So therefore, it's a doctrine that's available on zoning amendments through... on ordinances of zoning changes solely. It's only a limited doctrine, but it is defensible by the courts, and it was articulated in this ordinance.
Well, since I was part of the unanimous vote, and God only knows how that one slid by me, but I'm not going to be inconsistent now and then vote against what I did before. But I really do hate impending ordinances. I mean, that's wrong, but I like the intent of the ordinance, so I'm good.
Mr. Roddy?
I was just going to make a quick comment. We've had, over the years, we've had some issues when we do the pending doctrine ordinance. It creates all kind of heartburn and headache, and it leaves us a couple weeks down the road, a month or so down the road, asking, "Why do we do this?" Because someone's going to come up and say otherwise, whether they had something already in the works that hadn't hit our radar, and it pops up two weeks from now, or a month from now. And they're on the outside looking in. And I think one of the last discussions that we had, when this kind of came into play, is that we don't know who's in negotiation. We don't know who has plans in the works who haven't hit the county level to look to move forward. And I think that creates a world of hurt for the planners out there who haven't made contact with our staff and put projects on the radar that may be coming to us within the next month or so. But like I say, if we've already did some preliminary passing of this and kind of set the stage for it, it doesn't make good sense to kind of turn back on it. But it does come up time and time again when we enact it this way going forward. But just a side note on that.
I was just going to...
Ms. Love?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to kind of say that we've been talking about this publicly now for probably about a year. I don't know. We've been discussing these small-area plans, and this has been on many agendas. And I think the pending ordinance doctrine is critical sometimes when, you know, we talk about things we want to do, and these things are not things that this council wants to do. These things are things that we're looking to do on behalf of the residents of this county, and some of those things take a long time to do. And when you start talking about things, the first thing that happens is that those things that you don't want, they get their foot in the door. So I'm actually a big fan of pending ordinance doctrine, as opposed to a few of my fellow council members. But in this case, I think it's very important. We've come a long way on this, and that door closed, as far as I'm concerned, the last time this came before council.
I just want to add one thing.
One last word.
And, you know, I understand Ms. Love's comment, but here again, when you're not being transparent with the citizens, and you have a first reading, and all of a sudden it's an ordinance, enforceable, that's just not right. There's a reason we have three readings. It's not one reading, and it's over. There's a reason for three readings.
And with that being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Counsel, to consider the York County Council Emergency Ordinance declaring requirement to wear face coverings in public places with exceptions and provide for other matters related thereto with an effective date of July 22, 2020, at 12:01 a.m. Move to approve.
Well, I'll second. I know Ms. Love.
There is a second. Mr. Roddy?
It's on my agenda, so...
I'll first want to get started by saying, you know, everyone knows where I stand on this issue. It's been beat up several times, whether up here, in the meetings, publicly. It behooves me to see people come here and question science, or question the experts who have said what works, what doesn't work, questioning whether their numbers or how deaths are recorded. And to hear someone say that wearing a mask infringes on their freedom or their liberty. And like one of the speakers said earlier, we put many things in place here in South Carolina that if we went down the list, could say, "That infringes on my right. That infringes on my liberty." When you talk about the smoking ban, you talk about seatbelts, we talk about vaccinations for our kids to attend public schools here in South Carolina. There's a whole list of things that one could point to at any point of the day that could say, "This infringes on my right or my liberty." And I was just handed a report earlier today that there's already 52 cities, towns, or counties in South Carolina that's already enacted some type of mask ordinance. And yet I see people shaking their head, not even believing that, and this came from our clerk right here at York County. Also, over the last couple weeks, we've been... Our clerk has been taking emails from citizens at random, who's sent them in to Karen, and she sends them out to us. I wanted her to take it a step farther, keep up with those that was in favor of it, of the ordinance, and those who were opposed to it. And here I have opposed this 24 emails that were just sent in at random. And in this stack, we have in favor of 49 emails. You know, so obviously, there's an appetite for something to be done, whether it meets everyone's approval. But the one thing that we can't argue with is that this is an infectious disease. It's spread in multiple ways. You know, a face mask is not a one-size-fits-all. It's not a cure-all. Just because you wear a face mask doesn't mean that you're not going to get it. Wearing this face mask recognizes that I'm concerned about your health, and you're not willing to wear one, says that you're not concerned about my health if we're in the room together. And our ordinance, I describe it as a Manila-type ordinance, when we're only asking citizens to wear a face mask when you're out doing business in public. If you're out walking your dog, you don't need a face mask. You're out riding a bike, you don't need a face mask. If you're driving your car, you don't need a face mask. If you're out doing whatever you want to do. But when you set foot in a local retailer, and that 18, 19, 20-year-old, or that parent of three, or four, or five is there working because they have to pay the bills, and they're required to wear a mask because their job says so. And we're allowing people to just walk in off the street and not take any precautions And we're allowing people to just walk in off the street and not take any precautions to protect that worker. When you walk into a medical facility, anywhere in this country, you have to put on a face mask. If you refuse to put on a face mask, they're gonna refuse you service. Why can't our local workers at certain retailers here in York County, in the unincorporated areas, enjoy those same liberties to be able to go to work and be in a safe environment? That's all our ordinance is asking our citizens to do. When you set foot inside of a retailer to put on a face mask, you wouldn't dare teach your children to cough and not cover their mouth. That's not being considerate of other people's health, that's being very disingenuous. So the only thing I'm asking is that we trust the science, trust the data, and this is not an indefinite mask requirement. We're only asking for 60 days to see what this can do. And the experts have said, if more people would wear masks, we can curb the spread of this virus. Our kids can be set to go back to school in a reasonable timeframe without having to worry about some made-up schedule for them to get back into these facilities. And I'll end this on one more note. People question, how will it be enforced? No one said our sheriff will be out face-mass patrolling, looking to automatically write tickets. It's the education component that goes with what we're asking citizens to do. I don't think this, I don't think any of these 52 cities, or towns, or counties on this list has set out to write tickets. But what they have done is set out to educate people of the importance of wearing masks to protect our public health. And this is not about individual freedoms, it's about public health. You know, people wanna say, my individual, my individual, my public, my right. This is about public health and safety. You know, one speaker said, it's not the government's right to protect her. Oh, yes, it is. Let's just do away with all the jails. Let's do away with all the courts and see what we have. There are things put in place to protect our public's health and safety. So with that being said, my position is standing firm on looking to council to require a mask ordinance.
Ms. Love?
I knew he was gonna point at me next. And quite frankly, I am the person who helped Councilman Roddy get this on the agenda tonight because I felt like, you know what, if I was as passionate about something as he is about this, I would want one of these people up here to help me get something on the agenda. But we don't agree. And I'm gonna explain to you why we don't agree. And we come from two different areas, because he is representing mostly Rock Hill, where their numbers are higher. It's a municipality, obviously, people are closer together there. And so when you add up the numbers on this chart that I've looked at today, there are 465 cases in Rock Hill over the past two weeks. But when you look at the rest of the county, and you look at the overall map of South Carolina, you see that the more rural areas, the more rural counties, don't have numbers quite so high. And I know we were given this chart tonight by Marion Ray Williams from my district. And when you talk about the number of cases between York, Lancaster, and Chester, but we're not talking about the percentage of cases, and there are a lot more people in York County. So these numbers would be very different, this chart would look very different if we used these numbers and we gave the percentage of the people in those populations. So there is an education involved here, and I think it's important, you know what, I've only mandated that two people wear a mask, and that's my parents, and it's because they're 80 years old. And I've mandated more than that to them because I care about them, and I don't want anything to happen to them. And I feel like, you know what, they've been telling me what to do for a real long time, and now it's time for me to educate them and give them a little advice on, you know what, I don't want you going out to the grocery store. I don't want you, you're compromised, and, and you know what, and, but do I wear a mask when I go over to see my parents? I don't wear a mask when I go to see my parents. So there is an education, and I think the county has done some of that. You know, we've posted on the website, we've got, there's a sign on the front door. Local businesses are very much involved in this. You know what, not all of them are gonna say you have to have on a mask. But I think that that number has definitely increased. I know it has in my district, and I see now there's a sticker that they can get to put on their, on their front door. That's, I think that's important, and I do think this is about education. And sometimes you have to smack somebody in the face with something before they actually learn. And, but it doesn't mean that we can mandate and tell them exactly what they have to do. I just, I'm not a believer in that. There are things that I don't do, because I'm a little bit of a cautious person, and I know y'all don't believe that. But I don't, I don't get in big crowds, I never have gotten into big crowds. I don't go to fireworks shows because I think, you know what, it's dangerous. And there are things that I don't do, and I think that's my right to not do those things. But if I choose to do those things, it's my right to do that, and I don't want anybody to tell me I can't. So, because listen, if you tell me I can't do it, I'm probably gonna do it. So that's the other side of this coin. So it is about education. And a lot of the things that have been mandated to people for their public safety, seat belts, that's not a county-level mandate, that's not something that York County has said you have to wear a seat belt in York County. Think how many lives we could save if we told everybody in York County, you know what, you're not gonna be able to smoke in this county anymore. We could save a lot of lives that way. That's not our role. So when you look at this, I look at this, I look at, you know, Roberts area, Sharon, Hickory Grove, I mean, they got one or two people. And so, you know, and, and I don't mean overall, I mean, you know what I mean?
They got 10 or 20, don't they?
They have one or two people that may have this virus, I don't know. You know, for me, I do have a little bit of a concern about the numbers, the numbers are very different, everybody's got a different opinion. This really boils down to more opinion than fact for me, and I have to weigh that in. You know, there are a lot of businesses who would be affected, negatively impacted, totally overall, if we were to put something like this in place, because we've got people that are farming. And it's not just one farmer out there farming, it's multiple people out there that might be within six feet of each other. Are we gonna make them wear a mask? I mean, there's a lot more risk to wearing a mask in 95-degree weather than there is this virus. Gyms, we're gonna tell people they can't go to the gyms anymore? You know what, it's important that they be able to do that. Construction companies, are the guys building all these houses that we've approved, are they gonna have to wear a mask? And so I just think there, I think we, this is not a blanket approach that we should, that we should be taking. I don't think this is the body of government that should be mandating this. And, you know, I do know that there will be a burden on our Sheriff's Department. I mean, you know, the people in my district are saying, hey, can you catch this guy? Can you come out here and watch for these speeders in my neighborhood? And, and there are a lot of priorities for the Sheriff's Department. And there are also people who will be calling, saying, hey, you know what, I'm over here at so-and-so, and there's a table of people, and they're not wearing a mask. And so it does create, we have to look a lot further down the line than just what this one simple decision might make for people and might mean for people. Honestly, I think social distancing is important. I think the farther we are apart from each other is, I think that's a positive thing. But we can't mandate that either, we can't say you have to be six, six feet. Look at the DMV. I mean, my goodness, there's certainly, there's too many people out there, they'd be lined up all the way down 274. But we just, I just don't think it's scientific, I think it's more opinion. And there are two sides. This is a bad position for this council to be in, for anybody to be in like this, because, you know what, half of the people, and it's not really 60/40, it's half and half, according to what I've seen. And, you know what, so half the people are gonna be upset with me tonight, and half the people are gonna be, you know, willing to vote for me again one day. And I just, it's a tough position to be in. So I'm gonna do what I feel like is the right thing. Overall, I am not comfortable mandating masks, because I don't know how long it's gonna be before we come back and try to mandate that they stay home. And I just, I just can't, I can't take the first step in doing something like that.
Dr. Blackwell, we're gonna go down the line, okay? You know, I wanna thank everybody for their input. Like Bump said, I was at the beach for a long-deserved vacation for two weeks, and all of a sudden I start getting emails left and right. And I thought, great, I can't get a break. But, you know, it essentially comes down to those that are concerned about public health and those that are concerned about our liberties. And it's great to see people concerned about our liberties being taken away, because you know what, you're absolutely right, 110% right. I mean, I saw that 30 years ago, and it's like, it's great that everybody's kinda getting on board now. Where were you 20, 30 years ago? Because when I was on the school board, I saw discipline being watered down, I saw academics being weakened, I saw Bill Clinton mandate English as the second language. And it's like, what in the world is going on? Now, those students that I fought hard for back then, whether you wanna call them the Clinton generation, Facebook generation, whatever identity you wanna give them, now they're becoming our adults and leaders, and their attitude as a generation is kinda, I believe, more in entitlement, instead of earning it through hard work. I believe in playing the victim, instead of having personal accountability and responsibility. They're even open to socialism. Who would've thought that 20, 30 years ago? Now, news is nonexistent, and I guess with the news media, it's kinda what goes around comes around, they're finally paying the price. But news now is Facebook and Twitter feeds, and then they just take that as an antidote and print it, and now that's news. It could be keyboard warriors could go crazy printing all this stuff, typing this stuff, it has no bearing on the truth, but now that's the truth because they got away with it. Kinda like Bill Clinton used to teach. So, yes, our liberties and traditional American values in this country are being greatly eroded. But on this issue, I'm concerned as a doctor about the public health issue. I mean, if you think about living out in a nice subdivision, and the county government says, you gotta put a fence around that swimming pool, well, this is my land, you can't tell me what to do. Well, yeah, we wanna protect the toddlers and the kids in the neighborhood from running over there, falling in the pool and drowning. Or when we had the cigarette smoking prohibitions that came about in restaurants, I mean, you absolutely can go to your home and smoke yourself into a liver and lung cancer death as much as you want. But you don't have a right to come in a restaurant and have me smell that cigarette smoke, and at best, I get a sinus infection, at worst, I get secondhand cancer. So there is some logic to trying to protect the citizens. And as I've looked at the statistics, and everybody was throwing out this Google research and that Google search, I read more medical journals and stuff, it's getting worse. And the virus doesn't, the masks are not a cure-all for the virus. The virus is about .2 microns, most masks are ineffective after .5 microns. But it protects you from the body fluids. So when you wear a mask, you're not protecting yourself, you're protecting the people you're around. And they speak, the spit, whatever that comes off of them can carry that virus. So if you're doing your part to protect other people, but the other people aren't wearing their mask, well, you're kinda screwed, but you're protecting the people around you. So, you know, there's gotta be some common sense involved with this. Enforcement would be a tremendous detriment to this, so the only way that I could see this being logical would be just for businesses with whatever variations like gyms where you work out, you can't be wearing a mask. I mean, I'm a heart patient, so I can't be suffocating myself when I try to work out and do what I do. But I know one or two people spoke out about, you know, maybe it's only 90%, I mean, 10% or 5% that will die from this. But why can't we do our part?
Excuse me, there is no, no, ma'am.
Yeah.
You will be removed. Anyone who speaks out will be removed from this chamber.
The point being, whatever he said, I think he said 5%.
Ma'am, you're about to be removed from this chamber, please stop.
The point I wanna make, though, without getting particular on the number, I mean, you have a lot of numbers being thrown out there, and there is that fraction of people that need protection. I mean, I'm a heart patient, and they said, if I catch it, I die. But, and I got my mask, you know, I didn't wanna wear it here speaking because muffled and everything else, but when I get up, I put it on and walk out with it on. I wore it all day, I suffocated all day with it. But if there's a way that we can have a straightforward enforcement for businesses where they call up and say, hey, we got a person here, they won't put a mask on, I've told them, you can't come into my business without a mask, then the sheriff can go out and use trespassing ordinance. I don't wanna have the Sheriff's Department interfered with and having to run around catching everybody without a mask, that's ludicrous. So if we could come up with a simple solution where it's like a trespass ordinance, which is already there, it's just businesses that wanna protect their clientele and have people feel comfortable when they walk in there and not feel threatened, you know, I see a lot of common sense, for lack of a better word. And I get the violation of our rights and all that, I mean, I've been fighting that for 30 years. And it's been, some of the people out there have no clue how bad it's getting, and they have no clue. But in this one thing about protecting people, I wanna protect people. And I'm not into a social, you know, whatever I'm trying to say, a police state? Absolutely not, I'm the one that's fought that kinda stuff. But at the same time, I wanna have some common sense about public health. So if this thing could be worded where it provides common sense, and the sheriff's not running around chasing everybody that doesn't have a mask on, and it's just for businesses that wanna protect their customers, then I would be for it, if that's possible.
Mr. Hamilton?
Well, I can tell you, I don't support the resolution as it's written, and it's not because I necessarily agree with, or disagree with, most of what Mr. Roddy has to say. Is there a risk? Yes. Do masks help to mitigate that risk? Absolutely. But where you start to lose me is when you start talking about an enforceable individual mandate. And unfortunately, if, you know, I heard, well, we're not really gonna enforce it, we're not really gonna send people out, or deputies out to find people, we're not really going to enforce this fine. Well, if we're not going to do that, then it's just not a mandate. What we're doing, at best, is a strong suggestion, and I'm 100% behind that. If you're in a circumstance where social distancing is not possible, wearing a mask does help prevent the spread of the virus to others. The studies, as Dr. Blackwell has said and others have said, are pretty clear on that. But again, where you start to lose me is where you start to say, well, we're gonna find you for not wearing it, and we're gonna spend our resources as a county and put that burden on our deputies to go out and enforce this. Does the government have the right to do that? In circumstances where there's a compelling reason to do so, and the risk is high enough, I believe that we do have the right to protect people's health. However, you know, if we're defining the risk, you know, York County has seen a rising number of cases, most of which are within three zip codes of Rock Hill and mostly Fort Mill, who have mask ordinances now. So what we're really talking about are the areas outside of that, in the unincorporated areas, where the numbers are much lower. We actually, in York County, have less than 4%, I think 3.39% of the cases in the state of South Carolina, when we have nearly 6% of the population. And over 60% of those cases are within the cities of Rock Hill and Fort Mill, who have mask ordinances. So while I believe we have the authority to do so, I just can't get behind spending the resources and putting the burden on our law enforcement to go police and enforce a mandate that we're saying, oh, it's not really a mandate, we're not actually going to enforce it. Well, one or the other, if it is a mandate, then we need to enforce it. If we're not going to enforce it, then it's just not a mandate. And to call it a mandate, I think is disingenuous if we don't have the plans or the means to adequately enforce it. So that's where you start to lose me, and I just, I can't support it the way it's written.
Mr. Winkler?
Thank you. I'm gonna try to keep it fairly short. You know, there's a saying out there that numbers don't lie, but words can. And I think it might've been Will Rogers that said, the problem with statistics is if you torture them enough, they'll tell you anything. You know, there's experts on every side of this, as we've seen tonight, you know, and there are very passionate people on every side of this, as we've seen tonight. I personally, I have my mask in my pocket, and if I go to a business that says it's mandated, or if I go somewhere where I can't social distance, or I know there's gonna be a big crowd, I will put it on. But I think it's that businessperson's prerogative, it's their business, if they don't want me in there with a mask on, then I won't go in. Or I'll put a mask on, and I'll go in if I need it, you know, at that point. I do not support mandating that, though. I do not believe that is our local government's job to mandate that, and I do not believe it puts our sheriff's office and our law enforcement in a good situation. There will be people calling and reporting people who are not wearing them in businesses. You know, our sheriff's patrols are not gonna be out looking for people, I don't think, that aren't wearing their masks. But when they get a call, they have to respond. And unfortunately, in today's society, it's not as prevalent here in York County, thank goodness. But in today's society, law enforcement has enough negative things thrown at them and enough negative, you know, media coverage and everything else. I would hate to have to put this on them as well and have them having to deal with the emotions that we're seeing tonight on versus somebody wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. I just don't want to put our law enforcement in that situation, put them in another place where somebody can put them in a potentially bad light or cause a bad taste for somebody when they're only trying to do what we are telling them to do when they need to be out there protecting the citizens in other situations and not chasing down somebody for a $25 civil fine. So, I do not support this. I do think that, again, it's your prerogative. And if you cannot social distance, then yes, I think masks can help in that situation. You know, if you, and it's not that I, we've heard people say it's a hoax. It's not a hoax. I've had five close family members or personal friends that have tested positive for it that I know had it. It wasn't one of those tests where they tested positive, but they never went in. My oldest daughter spent three weeks flat on her back in bed in Louisiana back in April. I think it was maybe late March. And it was a very severe flu-like situation for her, high fever. It's a real situation. I've got four friends in Rock Hill, two couples, that all four of them contracted it down at Myrtle Beach a few weeks back. They all have condos down there and stuff. One of them is a heart patient. He's, and is, they're all in their mid-60s. And he did spend about a week in Carolina's Medical Center. But he's home now. He's good, thank goodness, thank the Lord. But it's not a hoax. It's a real situation. I just do not believe it is our job to mandate when and where everybody should be wearing their mask. And I will not support the emergency ordinance.
Ms. Cox?
I think it's a hard decision. I can tell you that I've spent hours and hours researching, researching, researching. And I think a lot of folks out here have been given mixed messages. And what concerns me most are things that are where the media could bring some, some collectivity to things, you know. Initially, when this issue came up, the municipalities were pointing to the county saying, "Why aren't you doing anything?" Well, the fact of the matter is, the only thing we can do, if we passed anything, would only be for the unincorporated areas for the county. We can't even pass anything that would apply to the more dense populations of the municipalities. I believe in the people of York County. I believe in our small businesses. I believe they know best how to make decisions for themselves. And they actually have a choice now, the unincorporated or the incorporated, assuming this vote goes the way it sounds like it's going to. But I do have a few things that concern me. And I've talked with a lot of council members. We don't take this issue lightly. I mean, I'm a mother of three children. And if you've ever seen a mother bear, when her little cubs get threatened at all in any way, you see somebody come out in full force. That's how I feel about the people that I represent. So, I have not taken this lightly. But anyone who knows me knows that I'm strongly, I'm a strong believer in give me liberty or give me death. And people need to have the freedom to make the decisions, to do what they need to do. It does concern me that the governor and the attorney general seem to have punted on this decision. And they put the responsibility on us, but they're not requiring DHEC to give us the information. I have spent hours and hours asking very specific questions. How is this being transmitted in York County? That's the only area we have. Tell me how it's being transmitted. Is it because of people going to the beach? Is it just in their family? Is it because, you know, one member of a family got it in a dense populated area? Zero. Zero information that we're given. And we're being asked to basically take a stab in the dark, and that's a problem for me. I don't mind making hard decisions, but you need to give me the facts and you need to give me access to that information. And when our emergency management folks can't come to me and tell me, "How is this being transmitted? How do we really solve this problem? Do we need to go to a specific area of our county and provide education? Do we need to do something here in this particular area because folks don't have access to the maps?" Masks. That's what we need to do. We're not getting that information. That combined with the fact that I just refuse to put another burden on our law enforcement at this time. They are not mask mandate arbiters. And we depend on them. They've been hit hard lately. And I think it would be a problem for them to be able to enforce that and to be able to enforce it in a way that is, that makes sense. How do we know it wouldn't be targeted in areas that are a problem? Or at least be accused of that. And so, I think we might could create a lot more problem by doing this. And until I get more information from DHEC, until I get some, some facts that make me feel comfortable about that, extending this to the unincorporated areas, the rural parts of the areas, just does not make sense.
Mr. Winkler, was that a Georgia Tech face mask?
It is.
I hope it works better than defense did last year.
I got an extra one. I tried to give to Kevin over there so he could replace that A&amp;M mask.
Well, I know that mask can't work either because his defense didn't stop anybody last year either. CVS, Best Buy, Publix, Harris Teeter, Lowe's, Home Depot, Kohl's, Walmart, Target, Starbucks, Costco, Walgreens, Whole Foods, Verizon, PetSmart, and Aldi. All places you may not go into without a mask. All places that a common sense solution is if the manager, and you refuse, the manager's going to call law enforcement, you're trespassing at that point, and they can have you removed, as a private business should be allowed to do. That's common sense. That's good business for our community. It is not overreached by the government because the government didn't mandate it. I will vote no. All those in favor of...
Can I ask one more question to help Mr. Roddy's motion? Either Kevin or, is Michael over there? Oh, there you are. I thought you'd run ahead.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way to, because like I said, the way I read it, I'm not warm and fuzzy about the enforcement. I agree 100% with Mr. Hamilton in terms of the enforceability of it. Per Mr. Johnson's comment, I mean, is it possible to just to put in there some kind of clause about, per the normal trespassing ordinance, this is enforceable? Where a business calls up, the owner of the business calls up? Because you can't have every Tom, Dick, and Harry in the business saying, "Oh, that guy's not wearing a mask. They just need to go to the manager of the business and let him deal with it."
Yes, you could modify it to apply solely to businesses and ask that the enforcement mechanism be at the discretion of the proprietor.
Per the trespass ordinance?
Yes.
Mr. Kendry, is the trespass ordinance already not say that? That a business can call and ask someone to be removed from their property?
If they're not complying with, I believe so, absolutely.
Right. So, it exists today?
Right.
But why would we create an ordinance to recreate an ordinance we already have?
Well, would he be trespassing? He would have to be trespassing against an ordinance, not just trespassing, wouldn't he? If there's no mask mandate, could he, how could he say he's trespassing? He's going to say, "How am I trespassing?"
Well, business policy, that'd be violating the store's business policy for patrons. And that could invite a whole host of issues as well. But to your point, the ordinance would be the tool that the proprietor could rely upon to ask law enforcement to enforce it definitively.
I mean, I'm just so concerned about the public health of people and the disregard that we have this day and time with the newer generations, all about me and nobody else. But I understand the complexities of an enforcement policy. I'm just trying to delay the vote and run through my head the best way to say it without... But I'm just thinking, obviously, the simple comment of Mr. Johnson that, "Well, the trespass ordinance is already there." But I'm assuming businesses may or may not have that ordinance. I mean, that rule to come in and wear a mask. So, if we did this, then that would be a part of every unincorporated business. They would have to require people to wear a mask when they walked in. And that would be to protect the other people, not to protect themselves for the most part. But I would be willing to make an amendment to word it in terms of enforceable by the trespass ordinance only. So, the sheriff's office not running around grabbing people without a mask. And it has the teeth to it. I'm assuming that's a higher fine than $25. Probably more like $100 or something. But...
So, your motion is...
To amend based the enforcement based on the trespass ordinance.
All right. There is a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Can I second it?
You can.
There you have it. A second motion.
Since you two are the original motion and second person, y'all just want to amend. The motion can automatically be amended purely based on your consent. So, y'all have consented to that. Now, the only question before us is whether we pass the ordinance up or down. All those in favor of the ordinance as stated, say aye.
As amended?
Well, it's not amended. It is as amended, as stated. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. No.
No.
The motion fails.
Miss Love said aye. I heard her.
The motion fails. Counsel to consider adopting a resolution encouraging individuals to wear face coverings in public places and in certain circumstances and matters related thereto. I did get it all out, so...
I'd make a motion to deny.
There is a motion to deny. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
At this time, I have a, I think it's a two-minute video I'd like to play just for educational purposes for people who may be visiting with us or watching online.
From blue polos?
This kind of sums up a little bit about this virus. And hopefully, someone can walk away with a better understanding as to what our community is facing, what our country and our nation is facing that's dealing with this COVID.
You go ahead.
To blue lab coats and gloves. We headed down to Sacred Heart's laboratory to unmask a common question. What exactly does a mask do? So, we teamed up with the hospital's microbiology director, Dr. Rich Davis.
This one will be no mask. It's a demonstration of where respiratory droplets go and how they're easy they are to transmit and how a mask is effective at blocking those. That's really the key takeaway.
Here's how this demonstration worked. I had a Petri dish in front of my face as if it's another person's face. Then, with and without a mask, I talked.
Hey, how you doing?
Sang.
Somebody once told me the world is going to roam me.
Coughed. And sneezed. We also tried coughing with and without a mask from two feet away, four feet away, and six feet away. Dr. Davis put the dishes in an incubator, and we waited 24 hours for our results.
So, these are the plates that you were interacting with yesterday, with or without a mask?
Let's start with the face-to-face demonstration. Mask on the left, no mask on the right. Let's go with talking first.
Is the mask, that looks good. Talking without a, oh, okay. I'm actually shocked there's any at all. I'm going to be completely honest with you.
Next up, singing.
This was Changes by Tupac, and this was Smash Rock. Things will never be the same, never be the same, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pretty similar to talking. But Dr. Davis brought up a good point about one of nightlife's most popular activities.
Like karaoke night, when that microphone, after the night, I'm sure it's pretty gross and wet. So, now we've got coughing. So, this was just two, two coughs. Really? That's crazy.
Remember, all those yellow dots, that's where bacteria grew after the droplets out of my mouth landed there. But those droplets were nothing compared to the ones from sneezing. First, mask on.
What? Okay. I'm terrified to look at this one. This is no mask? Ooh. Good Lord.
When I had my mask on, no yellow dots. But when I didn't, there was always something.
What this kind of goes to show is that most of those, you know, heavy fat droplets, they're going to come out of your mouth. They're going to have bacteria. They're going to have viruses potentially. You know, they're going to get caught and not go forward into, you know, the space in front of you.
It was the same case for the social distancing demonstration.
So, yesterday, I was standing right here. No mask, with a mask. Four feet, you can see it's less, but still pretty prevalent. Six feet, oh, okay. Yeah, just one or two, few up there. So, there really is that distance difference where the droplets that you're producing by coughing, pretty much, a lot of them are falling out of the air. To me, I think we're coming into a new reality where masks fit into that very social conscious paradigm. You do simple things that everyone can do. It's not going to be 100% effective. But if we all do it, it's going to definitely make a difference in preventing things from spreading one person to another.
Where was this video on the first discussion?
I'll say it wasn't going to change anyone else's mind up here. People were set in their ways and they had their mind made up. So, there you have it.
Any other discussion? All those...
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to throw this out for discussion purposes. One of the things that was put into the previous ordinance for consideration, and one of the things that I've been pondering is it's one thing to force someone to do something. It's another, as government, to provide good education and to provide resources that give folks the ability to make a decision. I have, throughout this timeframe, suggested that counsel consider providing signage that encourages, that businesses could use, that encourage folks to become aware, those who are not, about, and remind them. I know that when you go to other jurisdictions, other states, in fact, they have signs outside their businesses that is a reminder to them. And they provide masks available to those folks. I think that we could be proactive and be positive about doing some of those things. Giving them to, even our deputies are giving them to our local businesses to encourage compliance. But to force folks to do things is a totally different scenario. And so, I would be supportive of that if there's willingness on the council to consider that. But I do support, you know, the resolution that we all need to be mindful of it and we need to pay attention.
Ms. Love?
So, what, I don't really know what the difference is in what you're, what we're proposing here versus what we've been doing on the county website? Because where else are we going to encourage people to do this? Is this going to be an article in the Herald tomorrow morning? Is this just a CYA for us? I mean, I don't understand what's difference. I mean, what the difference is, we've been posting now for months that people need to wear a mask, they need to social distance, they need to, you know, all of these things. So, I'm just, I'm just curious. And when it says in public places, and is that a park? I mean, are we asking them now, we're encouraging them to wear their mask? We're just, you know, doing the same thing. We're just not mandating. So, we're asking them to wear the, we're encouraging them to wear face coverings in public places and in certain circumstances. I mean, what are those circumstances that we are, that we as a county are asking people to consider? This is just, this is very undefined for me. And I don't know how it differs from what we've, from what we've been doing.
Any other discussion?
I personally would welcome continued conversation about what we can do proactively. I think some of the emails and comments that we got received over the last few weeks indicate that there is a need for greater education. I don't think anyone up here thinks or agrees with the notion that this virus is not a risk or that it is somehow a hoax or that, you know, we're trying to just force something down anyone's throat. Obviously, that's not the case. And this resolution, I think, goes a long way in putting that decision on the people of this county. And Councilwoman Cox, I think, said it best that, you know, "We're entrusting the people of this county to make wise decisions and to think about the health of people that they encounter." If we can do something proactively to continue that discussion and to help any informational gaps or deficits that may exist or to help provide masks that otherwise wouldn't be accessible to people, I think we should continue that conversation and do something proactive.
I want to also echo those comments. I think we should do everything in our power to make sure that everyone who needs a mask has the ability to get one free of charge from the county. And that if we can give away masks to people who need them, we should, we should do that. I like the idea of signs for businesses and have from the very beginning. If you came to my office, quite honestly, there's a sign on the door that says, "You must wear a mask to enter my office." And you don't take it off the entire time you're in my office. I wear a mask.
I wear a mask, I wear a mask when I go to the grocery store. I would, you know, I have no problem encouraging people to wear a mask and anything we can do to help people who want to wear a mask get access to them, you know, that is, I think that is highly important and what we can do is good on that. I'm gonna let Mr. Roddy say one last word.
I just get one word?
Now you're done.
So, is there, am I hearing council members say we're gonna provide signs, we're gonna provide masks? Is that?
I think you're hearing, I think you're hearing that, it's not part of this, because it's not in it, but I think you're hearing us say that we need, we'd like to see moving in that direction and trying to do that, yes.
I mean, we don't meet for another month, so we gotta wait another month to structure something, what's gonna be the?
I think there's some discussions have been had with county, with the county manager's office and we have access to those things, am I correct, Mr. Hudson?
We have a supply of disposable masks, we've been using them at county facilities. They are fairly inexpensive, I don't know what our supplies like now, Chuck may be able to answer that. We do have some, I don't know that, how much demand there might be, because a lot of people already have their masks, but we do provide them at our entrances, so people coming in, if they have forgotten theirs or whatever, they can put one on. I suspect that's what they would be used for. It's a little difficult to quantify the demand for those masks.
Are they three- or four-part filters? Surgical masks? They're not? What kind of masks are they?
They're disposable masks, similar to what Mr. Roddy's wearing.
Because my, yeah, because my thinking is if we're gonna make an effort, let's not make a half-assed effort and just say, leave it up to people that's gonna come, let's set a structure to say, we're gonna go out and see if businesses want signs, we're gonna go out and see if businesses want masks, let's just don't make a comment tonight to make people feel good like we're gonna do something and not make an honest effort. So if we're gonna do this, are we setting aside a X number of dollars or what, how are we gonna arrive at the ultimate goal of educating, providing masks and signs, you know? I think this leaves it just too open for someone to walk away and say, hey, we're gonna provide masks, we're gonna provide signs, but to what level? You know, how are we gonna communicate? Are we gonna say if businesses want signs or they want masks to come to the county or are we gonna send people out to ask them do they want signs and masks? Because I just think it's just too open at this point, because it sounds like we're gonna do something, but we're not saying what we're gonna do.
Well, I don't think anybody, a business wanting a sign, I think that if the county provides an image, I mean, a business can make their own sign, but if they want something with York County on it, then they can just print it out. We just make it available, let them print it out and put it on their door. I don't think we're gonna go around and deliver signage to all the businesses, I wouldn't, I would hope we're not gonna do that. And if people want a mask, I mean, I just think there's some liability even in giving somebody a mask, because if you can't ensure that they're not gonna, I mean, do they think they're not gonna get the virus because they now have a county mask? I mean, that's a little bit of a concern, I mean, a lot of places have given masks and, I mean, the fire departments, they have masks to give out, so I just, I'm just concerned a little bit about the liability of giving a mask and letting somebody feel like maybe they now are safer than they were before. You know, if they weren't wearing one before and then we give them one, does this promote people going out and people that maybe wouldn't have been are now out and about in a mask that the county's provided? I don't know, I'm just bringing that up as a question.
All right, because I'm gonna rein us back in. The motion before us is on the resolution, whether or not we will be able to give out masks, you're right, Mr. Roddy, we're gonna have to work through that. And that's not gonna happen in this discussion tonight or as part of this resolution. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Counsel to consider the use of fiscal year 2020 projected general fund surplus for a one-time COVID-19 bonus for all employees.
All right, thank you, sir.
Need a motion?
I was gonna say, I'm the one that asked for this to be on here, so my motion is, and I'll explain why, I guess, after I make the motion, is that we use a portion of our projected surplus for the fiscal year 2020 to do COVID appreciation bonuses for all county employees of $1,000 each and for all sheriff's office frontline employees of $2,000 each.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second, Mr. Winkler.
Thank you. In looking at budget and in looking at what all we've done, there's been a tremendous amount of sacrifice by all of us, but especially our county employees and our frontline sheriff's deputies, not just in COVID, but at everything that happens, but with COVID right now, you know, we've had to make a lot of changes. We asked our county staff, when we're already pretty lean in how we operate our county staff, we've got great staff here at the county, but we've asked them to make changes, we've asked them to step up, there's been, it's affected some of them at home as far as income and different things. And when all this started, we asked them to cut back on budgets, on spending, because we weren't real sure what it was gonna look like in the end and we're still not positive, but fiscal year has ended and we do have a projected surplus. And so, I would like to, the reason I made this motion to think about that is to show county staff and frontline deputies that we appreciate the sacrifices they've made, not only throughout the year, but especially now with COVID and what's gone on and what they've done. You know, many of them have still been meeting with people face-to-face and especially the deputies, they can't social distance in their job when they're out there responding to calls and things, you know, they've got to get up close and personal sometimes. And so, I think this would be a way for us as a council to show our county employees and our frontline deputies how much we appreciate the sacrifices they have made during COVID and how much they do throughout the year. And this is, you know, just, I came up with this, Bump and I talked about it a good bit and I think this is something that we should be able to support and get behind.
What's the total amount of that, what would the total amount of that cost be, Robert?
Approximately 1.2 million. And there was some talk originally about doing some other things as far as sheriff's office getting a lump sum and county getting a lump sum, but in talking with sheriff's office, county management, this gives everyone kind of a level playing field for all support staff, whether they're county support staff, sheriff's support staff, whatever, all support staff get one amount and then frontline officers and people who were out there face-to-face and couldn't maybe social distance or stay behind the glass to meet with the public and stuff, get another amount.
So your answer to Allison was in terms of how much this would, this particular thousand and two thousand would cost?
Approximately 1.2 million.
Well, Kevin, what was the anticipated surplus?
Preliminary numbers, I expect about a $10 million increase in the general fund unassigned.
I can't hear you. How's the math?
10 million.
What'd you say?
10 million.
Preliminary numbers, I expect about a $10 million positive variance on the general fund unassigned.
How many people have been furloughed?
That keeps growing.
No employees are furloughed, sir.
Mr. Roddy.
I wanted to kind of clear up to make sure this is on the record, that, you know, everyone that works for the sheriff's department from, everybody that's on the sheriff's department payroll is gonna receive, if they're not the frontline deputies, they're gonna receive $1,000.
Yes.
Correct?
That's the motion, that all.
And the frontline deputies who are out on patrol or detectives and serving in that capacity will get $2,000.
Yes.
Did we put anything, is anything in here for our staff members that work at the windows or planning department? Did you put anything in there for our county, regular county employees?
The motion is that all regular county employees get the $1,000 bonus, every employee and everybody at the sheriff's office who is not frontline, who, you know, again, they have to get up close and personal sometimes, they can't do the social distance and they're standing behind the glass, so that's why I recommend more for them.
Now, I will go on the record to say that this is not a substitute for what we've mentioned at the conclusion of our budget, where I made the statement that, once the numbers finally come in, that we will still look to do a raise for our employees. This one-time bonus does not take the place of what, we've kind of had some preliminary conversations about putting a raise in place. So I'll support, I'll continue to support it, because, you know, our employees did step up during that time and they're still stepping up. Nothing's really changed out there on the streets for our deputies, nothing's really changed for our employees that report to work every day, so I'll continue to support this and I hope the rest of the council understands that this does not replace possible raise coming up within the next couple of months. This is by no means a substitution and I hope this doesn't create a division between people that's doing similar jobs for the sheriff's department and people doing jobs for the county per se, because, but they're only gonna get $1,000 if they are a clerk in the sheriff's department or clerk with the county.
And that's why I made the adjustment on the motion, so that similar jobs got the same thing.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that, you know, I am in total support of, obviously, our sheriff's office and county employees, but I will say this in addition to that. We cut budgets down like crazy. We took people's budgets and we cut stuff out of those budgets and now we have a $10 million surplus, so to me, it's not about what we're gonna use some of that money for, it's about the fact that, you know, we only did that, we only did that at the last meeting and so now here we are, a month out, and what else did we cut from county and from residents who depend on us to do things and departments that, you know, it'll make me think twice next year when it comes to budget time on what you're asking me to cut. Yep?
The primary thing to cut in the budget, again, the budget was prepared in worst-case scenario. There was a conscious effort made not to cut services to the county's residents and those services were not cut. The biggest hits, no raises in the budget right now in training, those are the two biggest areas that we cut, okay? And then planning had some other areas that historically they have not spent on, we cut those as well. But there was a conscious effort to make sure that the taxpayers did not see their services cut when we went through the budget process. You know, that is a big surplus and I want to, like counsel, that's not something we want to have, we don't want to have it at all. We had a lot of expenditures that didn't happen because of the virus, did not fill a lot of vacancies because of the virus and we had a lot of people having to work more because we didn't replace people. We have a plan for that surplus and how that's gonna impact the taxpayers going forward and it's going to be done wisely and I'm gonna present that to council. Right now, we're still waiting to see, there's four main revenue accounts that I'm paying attention to right now, the taxes, they came in very strong, building and codes and registered deed stamps sold, those two, we're monitoring those monthly, okay, seeing how much those are gonna fall. We prepared those based off last recession, the fourth is what the state's gonna do, we won't know that till probably September. The plan all along, and I tried to make this very clear with my counsel, is this budget was prepared bare bones to maintain the level of service for our taxpayers, with the hope and expectation that worst-case doesn't happen, we can revisit this budget in the fall of the budget amendment. I still hope to have that happen right now, the way tax revenue came in, I do think that will happen, to what degree, I don't know, I'm not prepared to answer that yet, but I want to make sure that our citizens out there understand that we did not cut their services and we don't strive to have a surplus like this every year, but we do have a plan in place as to what to do with that surplus and we'll be explaining that to council later this year.
Personally, I prefer raises over bonuses, I think it's a more positive thing overall for employees. When you're doing a blanket approach like that, I think a bonus is a great thing for employee here or there or multiple employees here or there, but I think, honestly, raises are, if you probably polled the employees, they would probably rather have raises over random bonuses. That's just my personal thought.
Dr. Blackwell.
And to your point, Kevin, one good thing about, and I understand Ms. Love and anybody else's concerns about, we got all this extra money, why didn't we get these taxes? But, you know, one thing about it though, that's how we paid off, we started the line item, capital management, maintenance, I mean, we, you know, paying the bonds off early, that came from that little nest egg that allowed for all that to be done, so.
Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify a little bit and agree with what Mr. Roddy said. I did not make this motion, this is, this is a projected surplus from fiscal year 2020. I did not make this motion to say this is in place of a potential raise if the funds are there for fiscal year 2021. That's two separate issues, in my opinion. That, we've said all along, we're gonna go back and look at that. This is a projected surplus for the fiscal year that just ended, that we're still finalizing numbers on and that was my intent. And I'll be honest with you, I had an intention tonight of, it probably would have given Kevin Madden a heart attack if I'd have made the motion like I intended to make it, but Kevin tells me, we've talked a little bit about the intentions for the rest of this surplus and what it will do to reduce taxpayers' millage in the future and to reduce our debt even sooner than what we originally intended. So I did not make the motion the way I originally intended and so, but I did want to state that for me, I agree 100% with Bump. This is a fiscal year 2020 bonus, this is, and raises would have been fiscal year 2021 and that's a whole separate issue that one doesn't supplant the other.
Anyone? Ms. Cox.
The word bonus bothers me, I don't like them, I view this more as a hazard pay and I certainly do support our sheriff's deputies, which is evident in my refusal to mandate something that I think would have posed too much of a problem on them. I view this, and I'm not opposed to a hazard pay structure for those who are on the front lines and who are expected to encounter folks who may or may not expose them to that. To me, that's more of what this is aimed at doing. My only concern, and I raised this when this was first brought up, was that there are a lot of volunteers, our volunteer firemen who are first responders, who we are asking to do the same thing and I think we're excluding a large group of folks and precluding them from, by, just by terminology alone, from being recognized for the things that they are doing to make sure that we follow through with the council. So, I mean, I would, I would suggest that we look at that and that we look at perhaps there being a timeframe for it being paid out, so that, you know, I would think it would look irresponsible of us as council members to give these bonuses out and then all of a sudden, you know, people leave. And maybe that's just my different understanding of what we're trying to accomplish with this, because I think I view it more as hazard pay and would like for us to look at a temporary prospective way to do that.
Was that in the form of a motion, we can change it to hazard pay?
If the terminology fits, I'll make the motion to amend to that effect, but I think it requires a little bit more discussion as to how we pay that out. Are we just gonna, I think there is a, I think there are a lot of folks out here who are hurting, who've been laid off and to see folks getting paid bonuses, you know, is going to be a bit of an issue, but I do not, I do not have a problem with supporting hazard pay, I think we need to spend a little bit more time figuring out how that would work and pay it prospectively.
So what is your motion, so I understand exactly what you're doing?
Well, I guess I'm confused about what we have, I didn't realize this was gonna be on here until the other day, that we were gonna take this up for consideration. I didn't even realize, and I think the number of the prospective surplus has now changed. We now have a whole lot more than what I thought we had, just, you know, a few, I've just learned today that the projected surplus is now $10 million. We were told $6 million and then previous to that, we were told before. I think there's an issue here with why we have a surplus and I'm not at all opposed to making sure that we look out for and that we do everything we can to retain the folks who are dealing face-to-face with the community. Government can't shut down, we have to keep moving and I think that there's a way to recognize them for that without us putting our entire, I think we need to have a little bit more discussion about it frankly, but I'm not opposed to it. I think we need to make sure it's a good plan.
So there is no amended motion? You're not amending anything based on what you're telling me?
If you, if you guys are insisting on voting tonight for this, I would move to amend to have, to defer it and to have a workshop between now and the next meeting so that we can come up with a good plan to pay hazard pay.
There is an amendment to the motion to defer, there is a second. Any discussion on the deferral?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
When I first started talking about this and talked with Councilmember Roddy and Councilmember Cox and some of the others, she raised that concern and I agree, we do have frontline volunteers that are out there, you know, our volunteer firefighters and first responders and I've supported them all along. I'm, you know, the first council member who stood up and said, let's figure out a way for the county to help pay for these volunteer firefighters, fire substations in my area and in different areas where they don't have special tax districts like they do in y'all's area. So I support them all along. them all along. The issue I have with a, I don't, whether we call it a hazard pay or a bonus, with doing it for volunteers is we then put them on the payroll and we've been rounding around with that so much lately that I'm not sure we want to try to do that tonight. That's another whole can of worms we're going to open up if we start giving them a $1,000 bonus or hazard pay when they're not a paid employee. They're a volunteer.
And they don't want to be.
And, and they, they don't want to all of a sudden be a W-2 employee and that type thing. So this is something that has been thought out and been, you know, worked on and, and it is something that is for every employee. And it is, I know it's employee. It is not something that's a retention bonus in my mind. This is a thank you. You know, we can, we can give them a raise and they can still leave if they get a better offer somewhere else. This, this is not about trying to give them a retention bonus. This is about a thank you and I'll, I'll agree every time I've talked with Mr. Madden recently, that surplus has grown and it gives me tremendous heartburn that we have that big a surplus. But I am glad to hear what county management's plans are for that and we'll be hearing that in the public very soon, as soon as they get that number finalized. And I just think this, you know, as originally done and as originally stated, for every employee, whether sheriff's office, county officer, whatever, to get the same amount across the board except for the frontline sheriff's deputies who again, yes, we've got county employees who are dealing with the public directly, but they are not always wrestling with the public and wrestling them down to the ground and, and doing things like that that our frontline sheriff's officers are where a mask or, or social distance can't happen in a split second that they've got to react to something. So those frontline employees for that is why I think there's a little bit more money that should be spent for that. So I would not support postponing or, or delaying this any further.
Anyone else want to speak on the deferral? Mr. Roddy?
I think we should go ahead and make a decision tonight. You know, we, we've, we've talked about it. You know, if, if we didn't have the money and we were rushing, wasn't sure of the financial part of it. And I don't think people are going to leave a volunteer capacity just because we're, you know, doing things to take care of our employees. I think our volunteers have a different mindset. They do it because they want to do it. That's a self gratifying public service that they give to the community. I don't think they look at what's being done from an employee standpoint. But we do take care of our firemen, our fire substations and people that, that volunteer in a, in an overwhelming capacity for us. So I don't, I don't think the threat of people leaving that volunteer capacity just because we're doing something for our employees. I, I don't think that's a real big threat. But I, I, I just don't want to delay any action any further because there's not going to be any new information unless Kevin reports back on money that the surplus was only 5 million. And that may raise some eyebrows, but I think he's pretty solid on his numbers. I, I'd just like to go ahead and vote on this tonight and put one more thing behind us.
Ms. Love?
Yeah. So I think this means that paid, paid firefighters would get, would get a bonus. Is that correct?
If they're the county paid employees, they would.
So that, okay. So I'm in, I'm in full support of, you know, the, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office and the county employees and, but I'm not going to vote for this tonight because I'm, I think that this should be looked at a little, a little harder. I think we need to be inclusive of, of, I just don't think it's been all the way totally thought out. And I think the timing is, is important. I don't think a, a little bit longer to check it out and consider, consider everything. You know, when you're talking about volunteers and, you know, Councilman Winkler says this is about a thank you. Well, I think the least thanked people sometimes are our volunteers and firefighters. And so, and maybe they don't get a check, but maybe they get something. Maybe they get something else. Maybe they get a, you know, a gift certificate or something, something like that. This, this, maybe it's different and maybe it's a lot less, you know, because overall they, they quite frankly expect a lot less from us. So I'm, I support this, but I'm not going to vote for it until I think we've gotten it right.
Would anyone else like to discuss the amendment to defer?
Well, I think the, the firemen have made it, the volunteer fire, firemen have made it clear. They don't want to be on payroll. This puts them on payroll, that one action. So I'm, I'm, I'm along, you know.
That's why I mentioned gift certificate or gift card or something.
We can still always do that without interfering with this.
All those in favor of the amendment to defer, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The amendment fails. Is there any further discussion as to the main motion? Mr. Hamilton?
So regardless of the terminology that we use, whether bonus or hazard pay, I'm definitely in favor of some monetary display of gratitude to our frontline deputies and employees that have worked so hard throughout this. But also very interested to hear about how we're going to return or otherwise use the taxpayers' money that we have. If we have, we don't have a surplus. We have too much of the taxpayers' money and, and that concerns me greatly. And I think we need to hear very soon about the total extent of that surplus and, and the plans for that and then vote on that as a council as soon as possible and figure out the best way. Because it's not just our employees and frontline deputies that could use that display of gratitude. It's also our citizens who have been through so much over the last several months. And if we have in excess of their money, then we need to figure out what to do with that quickly.
Tomorrow morning, the Herald and local media will most likely talk solely about the mask vote when really the discussion should lead with a $10 million surplus that this county has, is running. You know, and Joel began to say it. I, I wrote a few minutes ago, a surplus is money the government didn't need. This is $10 million of money the government did not need. I think it is imperative that we find a way to return it, not raise taxes, or pay down debt faster, or find good solutions of use of the money. The worst thing we can do is to give a million to here and another million here and a quarter of a million over here. Know that project over there, let's give them 350,000, to just watch it all disappear. That would be a travesty and I think that is something that we can't allow to do. And I feel confident our administration's not going to let us do that. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes. Counsel to discuss and vote regarding a proposed clear cutting ordinance to be added to the August 17, 2020 agenda. It is a discussion first. I believe Ms. Love asked that this be placed on the agenda. Ms. Love?
Thank you. So I did ask that this be placed on the agenda. There's been a lot of conversation about this during our zoning committee meetings. I've also met with a few other council members here and the local, local builders, just home builder association members to determine what, what we can do to help breathe some life back in, into them, into their businesses. So over a long period of time of discussing this, I felt that we come to the point where we probably have a, a majority of council in favor of, of doing this. There, there are a couple of things and this is, this is number one, that we can do as a county to keep some trees, just keep some trees. And, and a lot of times it's the, the land that is purchased by large national developers and rezoned. It's, it's those properties that are, that are, that are clear cut or mass graded, whatever the correct non-forestry term is. And it's, it's really just, in my opinion, it's kind of a standard. It's, it's a standard that we need to put in place and we don't really have the time to wait to re-code York County to, to get this done because we have a lot of local guys that are now, you know, they're looking for land. They're leaving, they're leaving York County. And it's my belief that the majority of people in York County want neighborhoods that have trees left in them. So I just feel like we need to ask the, the county management and the planning department to come up with a way for us to keep the trees. You know, what, what do we do to do that? It, it, I know that it limits some, some development on, on a level, but, but that's what, that's what's needed. That's where we are today. And so my goal in putting this on here was to get this ball rolling and downhill, not uphill. We want this ball to roll, roll quickly and help, help these guys. You're going to be hearing from them next month at the, at the council meeting. And I'd like to be ahead of that. I'd like to, to do what they've been asking us to do and what the residents of York County have been asking for. At every opportunity that we've given them to weigh in, this is what they've asked for, but they've not been heard yet. So I think the intent of this council has, has been to, to do something and we just haven't gotten around to it. And tonight, I'd like for us to get around to it and set this, set this in motion.
Ms. Love, would you please make, and we can have a discussion on whether or not we want this on the agenda. Would you please make a motion to have this matter placed on the August 17, 2020 agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to have this discuss, not, well, a discussion, I guess another discussion, but to hear from county management on, on what we can do to, to eliminate the, the clear cutting.
Second.
First and a second. Discussion. Dr. Black?
All I heard in her motion was a discussion. I didn't hear of, like a new ordinance or vote or anything.
Could you leave that off?
Well, I can add that. Yeah, yes. I mean, so tonight's thing was a discussion and vote. And so we're, now we're putting it, we're moving it, we're basically moving it out 30 days. So I guess that 30 days is to allow county management to get back to us and tell us exactly what those steps are.
There, my understanding is there was not an ordinance prepared for our, to be voted on tonight. And this, your motion, as I understood it, and we can clarify it if needed, was that this matter would be placed for vote, first reading before county council on August 17, 2020.
Mr. Hudson was raising his hand.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, just a couple of points on that. And not opposed to the ordinance, but typically those would go to the planning commission first. So the making it back to council in August may be difficult because we have to, number one, develop the ordinance and number two, get it before the planning commission and then probably schedule a public hearing. So I think the normal course of how an ordinance gets adopted may be problematic for having it on, actually on the council agenda. We can certainly start the process immediately, but I would suggest we follow the normal process for adopting an ordinance.
What would the normal process allow the first reading date of?
I'm not having a calendar in front of me. Probably could make the Sept, one of the September meetings.
Pick one, first or second one?
Second.
Second? All right, we need till the second. Will you amend your motion?
For clarification, what you're referring to, is that a matter of practice or a matter of rule?
It is based on the policy established by county council for, for previous cert, parts of that be state law and advertising a public hearing and all that. You could do a first reading prior to the public hearing with planning commission and everything, but based on the protocol we've established, you would do the public hearing with planning commission. After that's completed, you would come back to council for first reading.
Certainly, I would want to follow.
Is that not right?
No, you can do it either way. There, I mean, you can certainly have the first reading and then it could go to planning commission. It, it's, it's not locked in stone that that has to be the process.
Yeah, I understand. But I mean, the, the law allows you to do it a different way, but I think the protocol we've established by council was that.
We've certainly done it the latter way, not to have a, in air, a debate here, but that has certainly been done, the other measure as well.
Standard of practice has always been go through the planning commission first. Is that correct?
I would not say always. We've, we've kind of amended this over the last couple of years. So Mike, Michael is correct. It's been done several different ways. But, and I think the, the other issue is just how long it may take to develop such an ordinance. As staff, we're not clear what needs to be in the ordinance. And I'm happy to meet, meet with Ms. Love to see what's her intent to have in the ordinance. But all I see is establishment of a clear cutting ordinance and that could mean a multitude of things.
So that was kind of the discussion.
One second. Has this gone through committee? Has an ordinance been discussed and gone through your committee?
We've discussed this, this specific thing multiple times.
And our question is, when can we, I, I don't want to, I don't want to do this backwards. I want to do this the right way and I want people to have noticed, but I also want to do this as quickly as possible. This isn't a council-driven ordinance. This appears to be a builder-driven ordinance, which is, you know, that, the people that we're trying to, to help at times. The question is whether or not it will, can be voted on first reading, and I would prefer not in name only because I just don't, barely like it when I do the budget that way the first time. Can, can you have an ordinance by August 17th, I guess is the question, that we could vote first reading on, then it could go to planning? We would, we again would not vote second reading probably till second meeting in September at that point.
Why don't we use the pending ordinance, Dr.?
No. Now, Dr. Blackwell wouldn't support us then, so we're not going to do that. Could, do we have that ability, David? And you just need to be honest with us. Just tell it. If you can't do it, it can't be done.
My concern is I am not clear on what a clear cutting ordinance is. So to commit staff to have something done that is going to be to the satisfaction of Ms. Love without having had those specific conversations, it's hard for me to commit that we will have one drafted in the next 30 days. I'll commit to you that we'll work on it as diligently as we can and we'll get as much done as we can. But I need to understand what it is in the ordinance that we're trying to accomplish, what it is we're trying to accomplish. Have that drafted and then we can, we can bring it back to council in some form, whether we can get it back in 30 days. You know, we'll do our best to do so. I want it to be a good ordinance, something that we've vetted and, and considered. But typically, you know, we do have, have these discussions with the development community and all that as well. So, I mean, to answer your question, I could have an ordinance to you in August. I don't know that that's going to be the, the best ordinance or the amount of, the appropriate amount of time that it would require to get you a good ordinance.
Ms. Love, your comments and thoughts?
So we could have a zoning committee meeting and we could include some of these builders in that. I mean, they're pretty unanimous in what they're, what they're asking. So we could have probably just a few of those people to express what, what, what we're looking for. And we've discussed it, I mean, the zoning committee, we've discussed it multiple times. We actually had all, but, I don't know, 10 of them there with us at, at one, a couple of meetings back. And this was, you know, between this and the green space requirements that they're asking for, those are the two things that are going to keep them from being suffocated and having to move out of York County. And it's also, like I said, it's the number one thing. It's the number one thing that people are asking for is to, you know, just, just stop the, you know, you can't put as many houses in when you can't cut all the trees out. And I, I believe that's the message. That's the message. That's the overall message that I'm looking to, you know, get, get to.
If I could just suggest that we, if council would direct staff to work on a, on a clear cutting ordinance, we will do all our due diligence in order to prepare that as soon as we can. I'd prefer not to have a date. As long as you know we're working on it and we're following the process, that's what I would prefer to pursue.
How, how, how about this? Let me try to split this one. How about Ms. Love will have a zoning committee meeting prior to April 7, August, excuse me, August 17th. Because at the August 17th meeting, y'all will report back where we are and what this ordinance is going to look like. So we can get the, I think what council is saying to everyone here is we want this ordinance. We want to stop clear cutting. We want to work with the builders who want to stop clear cutting and we want an ordinance sooner than later. And we are not willing to wait until November for that to happen. I think that has been expressed now, but I don't, I don't think you can get a vote on August 17th. I just don't.
But we can get an update. We can get, we can get started.
So will you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I will withdraw.
The motion has been withdrawn. There'll be no, we, we, is that clear enough for y'all, David? Y'all? Y'all need us to vote and me don't?
Very clear.
Thank you. All right. Where am I at? All right. Ratification of grant application and award by Rock Hill School District Three for a school resource officer.
Vote approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Council to approve change order number two in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the extended general conditions and additional site work associated with the Heckle complex renovations.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to approve agreement with SCDOT and the City of Rock Hill to relocate the City of Rock Hill sewer line in conjunction with the SCDOT Manchester Creek Bridge replacement project.
Move to approve.
I guess I'd eat a second at one.
There's been a person a second. Any discussion?
I think it would be helpful for everyone in attendance, certainly listening though, to hear from staff to explain what we're doing here.
David, who would, oh, there we go. I.
Good evening. So this uh, agreement with the DOT and City of Rock Hill ties into our Cell River slash Red River Penny's Four Road Widening Project. Uh, within that project limits is Manchester Creek Bridge right in front of the city wastewater treatment facility. And the DOT has a project to widen that, or excuse me, to replace that bridge. The bridge is failing and they have a project to replace it. And part of that replacement, they have to relocate Rock Hill's sewer line that ties into their, to their treatment plant. Well, we've been working with the DOT and the city and have agreed that it makes sense to go ahead and move the sewer line to completely be out of the way when our five lane road comes through in, in a few years versus having to come back in three or four years and move it again. Um, staff actually came back to council May of last year and got preliminary approval to begin the discussions with DOT and the city. I realize it's a large fee, but it would be even larger if we didn't do it this way. This way it's all in one contract. They'll move, they'll relocate the sewer line for the bridge replacement project and for the widening project all at the same time. So when we come back in to widen it, it's already gone.
Any questions for Mr. Hamilton?
Uh, one quick one and this, this is just a guess, I know. But um, by doing it this way, instead of just doing the bridge now and then coming back in three years and moving the rest of it for the road widening project that we know is there, any guess as to how much more it would cost us?
I wouldn't be surprised if it was double, certainly. I could see it being double or more. It's around a bridge, there's steel casings, there's, it's, it's, as you can see by the estimate, it's, it's expensive work. And so having to come back in and tear out some stuff that was already done is, is going to be costly.
And these things don't get less expensive over the next three years.
Absolutely not.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Council to ratify the procurement for disposal of municipal solid waste at Republic Services Transfer Station for a total amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Council to ratify procurement of flooring replacement at Baxter Crossing Facility to Britton Flooring LLC of Rock Hill for a total cost of thirty thousand, seven sixty-one ninety.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry, Dr. Blackwell.
So let me understand this. So when they got there, then the library staff said, oh, we want some new floors too. So I guess they went to Britton Flooring.
Company and that got all worked out and they gave a, and I guess I should be talking to you, David, right? So they said, this is what we'll charge you to do what the library wants, correct? Am I right so far?
Yes, sir, I think that's pretty accurate.
And then how did this extra nine hundred and something dollars all of a sudden pop up?
I don't know the specifics. I know that it was a, just a change in uh, some, something that needed to be added, a small amount, but it pushed it over the threshold of the thirty thousand.
Britton Flooring Company kind of say, oops, we want to charge extra for this added stuff. We, I mean, did the library come back and say, we want something else? Or was this just, they came, Britton came back and said, oh, we gotta charge you another nine hundred something dollars?
Going off, remember when we reviewed this agenda item, this was not something where anybody, the library or economic development, added something to the project. It was the vendor coming back and saying, this is going to cost more money. And the nine hundred dollars pushed it over the thirty thousand dollar threshold.
Well, I get that part, that's why it's before us, but.
I guess what I'm trying to say is this was not driven by a request from the county library or economic development. This was just the vendor's cost going up because of the work.
So they gave a, an added cost for the library work, but then they came back and said, we underestimated what it would cost?
Yes, sir, in a nutshell, now I want to be clear, I'm not sure if that was specifically around the library work, the extra nine hundred dollars or the total project. I believe it to be the total project.
I'm kind of old school, I mean, you give a bid, you gotta stick by that bid. I, I just wanted to make sure that nothing new was added. So if they just kind of underbid the process and then want to, whether it's nine hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars, I don't like that. So I'm not gonna, if I understand you correctly, then I'm not going to support this.
And again, I, I'm, building maintenance could give you definitive answers on that, sir. Um, I'm just telling you with my recollection of that, I'm not sure if Eric Rickett's here today.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Council to ratify procurement of water system sampling services, services to JG Environmental of Kershaw for a total cost of thirty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Mr. Roddy.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I wanted to wait until we finished or got to the end of the new business. Um, this may fail, but I'm going to make one shot at it, given what the council's just done with part of the um, surplus funds that I just found out about. I would make a motion to reconsider the resolution um, that the council approved on masks, uh, to amend it to provide that the county manager is hereby directed to utilize county resources, not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the manager's discretion to facilitate placement or distributions of masks and PPE for the public and to provide signage to businesses, um, to notify individuals of York County's um, resolution. And if someone will second, I'll tell you why.
Second.
Second.
Uh, I think we just spent one point two million dollars and the guy who just got hired last week is going to get the same amount as someone who's been here thirty years and, and we, we could, we could have done a better job in how we spend the, the surplus funds. And it's concerning as the chairman of the finance committee to learn tonight for the first time that we actually have ten million dollars in surplus versus significantly less than that. Um, I think it, I think it's a problem if we don't try to do something with what we're confronted with right now with the pandemic. Um, to at least do something that gives access, that encourages folks to have options, um, but that doesn't infringe upon their civil liberties. And I think this would, um, we clearly have that there and I think that half of the population has requested that we do something. And I think that this is, this is a way to do that.
Before we move forward, Mr. Kendry.
Yes.
There is a motion that was a non-agenda item. I believe that requires unanimous consent to be considered.
No, sir, I, I beg to differ. That's an amendment, uh, motion to reconsider the resolution. That was an agenda item, the meeting is not finished, it's legitimately before council, should she receive a second?
Aye.
Positive majority.
Just wanted to make sure. Dr. Blackwell.
So, let me understand this. So we're gonna, for a business, we'll pay for their signage and for the masks they supply to their customers? Is that what I'm hearing?
Motion on the floor is to provide, it's to give county management the, the authorization um, to utilize county resources, not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to direct um, him to identify areas where we can facilitate the placement of masks and PPE and get them into the hands of the public, as well as to provide assistance to the businesses that we've just encouraged to take these steps, to um, notify the community of what we've done.
Does, I don't know if anybody knows this, does D hack provide the mask at no charge? I know they don't do the sign thing, but.
I'm not aware of such a program.
Mr. Roddy.
Hmm, I, I thought I, I thought I tried to nail this down while we were in discussion that, hey, what's the plan? And now to, to wait till, you know, we're, we're about to wrap up. Um, but I don't get it, you know? We don't want to require masks, but we're saying let's spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pump masks and sign out. I would have thought the hundred and fifty thousand dollars would have went with, hey, we're going to require masks, but we're going to equip businesses with signs and masks to do it. And to, and I heard one of the ladies earlier mention the whole Democrat Republican thing. And, you know, I've always known Republicans to be the party of law and order. But we both get a chance to put that in place and now we're suggesting spending all this money to do so. I don't, I don't think those two go hand in hand. I think we need to, if we're going to spend money, let's require masks and show that we support it by putting the, putting our money where our mouth is, require the masks, provide the signs and, and masks. This totally contradicts what we just voted down, but to me, the two go hand in hand. Let's require the masks and supply the masks.
Actually, I think what it does is, is looking back and giving us a little bit of time to, to take a look at what we were actually looking at before. I think you were supportive of it, um, so I'm a little bit surprised at, at, at the change of position because I think there were four council members who were interested in doing that, but we didn't have to actually specify how to put it into the ordinance. I looked back and, and discovered a way for us to try to consider that. Um, and given the fact that we've now discovered the surplus, it, it doesn't affect the taxpayers to, to provide a mechanism to help encourage um, folks to have that, the choice to do what they want to do. It simply is not forcing them to do anything.
Mr. Winkler.
Thank you. Um, I will not support the amendment for a number of reasons. Um, first of all, I am, again, I agree with Bump, it's almost like mandating, but I, I one hundred percent support and I would like to see Trish um, make a sign available on the county website that any business that wants to print with a county, you know, letterhead or a county logo on it can print off and put there. Um, I do not want us to get in the business of starting to buy medical supplies for every business in town because then we're going, you know, what about if they need first aid kits or Band-Aids for their first aid kit in their office or whatever? And I'm more concerned with us, you know, I mean, I went in a business here in York this week and the gentleman required masks and gloves. Um, and he's handing them out the door if you don't have them. You, you can buy, you know, at Sam's, you can buy a five hundred pack of latex gloves for nearly nothing. Um, and pretty much same thing with masks everywhere you go now, you can buy them. But I am concerned about taking our stockpile, which we may need in a major situation with our county staff, our emergency responders and that type of thing, and handing them out to everybody, Joe Public. And then something does happen, whether it's the pandemic gets worse, the next pandemic comes along, the next, whatever emergency is. And we don't have enough for our first responders because we've handed them out all over town to businesses who can go build, go buy them on their own and supply them if they want to have them in their business. So I will not support the motion.
Any other discussion? Dr. Blackwell.
Yeah, I, I get a little uneasy about supplying masks and signs to businesses. I, I'm just, I guess Robert said it better than I could, so I'm not going to support it.
Anyone else? Dr., Mr. Hamilton.
Kind of see where it's going. I do think that we do need to do something proactive. I don't think we need to necessarily tie it to a dollar amount. I am interested in hearing more about what our current supply looks like. And I would wholeheartedly agree with providing guidance to businesses who want to post signage, um, placing the burden of printing and placing that signage on the businesses, of course, but providing the resources on the county websites, as I believe, um, Councilwoman Love has also mentioned. Would you amend your motion or change your motion to reflect something that is more perhaps palatable to the rest of council rather than?
Gladly, I'm, I'm glad to have the discussion.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing something to the table, but I think tying it to a specific dollar amount um, is concerning and probably wouldn't have the support necessary.
I'm going to chime in very quickly and then we can kind of go back and have another round of discussions if needed. Tying it to a dollar figure right now bothers me because it kind of goes back to what I said a minute ago. If we're going to watch a hundred and fifty go here and a hundred and ten go, and it's just going to disappear. Ten million just goes away. I like the idea though, I like the idea of, of the county helping with signs. I like it more when you can just print it off at your own business as opposed to us producing a bunch of signs for people. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but certainly just printing it off and being able to put it. Every business I go into basically has a sign now, it seems. Um, and I, and I don't, and I, and I like the idea of somehow coming up with a way to distribute PPE to people who need that. I think it needs to be, this needs to be thought out a little more. Um, and I, and so how you, you amend your motion, if it's simply asking management to look into ways that these things can begin to be done and, and, and report back to us. The unfortunate part of this is we're almost asking, the way we're acting is like, oh, this won't be happening in August. Um, most likely COVID nineteen's not going anywhere until a vaccine exists. And so we will be dealing with this in August and September and October and November and December, all into next year at a certain point. Yeah, so I think we need to address it. We can, moving a month on how the best way to handle it, and I think it should go through the finance committee and talk about what the surplus looks like, how it's going to be spent, where money would come for these PPE products. I think all of that makes a lot of sense to me. I just, I, I, I'm a little nervous with the tying it to the money part. So I, and I've heard you say the motion a couple of times, but I can't off the top of my head.
Well, I felt like if I didn't put a, a number to it, then we wouldn't have any parameters. And so then that would, that would, it would fail on that end. I mean, I'm happy to, you know, if, if Mr. Hamilton has any other suggestions, the motion was simply to follow, to, to instruct our county management to investigate and to use his discretion to determine how best to provide education, provide encouragement. I mean, what we voted on tonight was a resolution to encourage folks to do stuff. I think there's clearly enough money in the budget to do this. We have a, we have a situation on our hands and I think that, that we don't need to wait another month for, to give some, some discretion to our management to come up with ways to help our community um, do what we just asked them to do in a resolution. So if the only thing I need to do is to remove it, the, the financial aspect of it to, to get support, I'm willing to do that, but it looks like it's me, you and Mr. Hamilton right now. So it may not matter.
Why don't you give it a whirl and let's see how it goes.
Okay. How do I do that?
You made the motion, yeah. It's, so you're amending to remove the dollar amount. Who made the second to um, the original motion? Allison, do you, will you adopt her amendment?
If she states it. I don't know what it is.
State it again, just say the whole, say the whole thing.
I think it's actually Joel's amendment, but um.
But if it's yours, it's cleaner.
But I need support, so if I keep saying stuff that y'all don't agree with, it's not going to work, so um.
I believe it was basically to direct management to um, provide resources like signage and education and develop a plan to um, distribute masks or other person protected.
To amend the resolution to provide that the county manager is hereby directed to utilize county resources and the manager's discretion to facilitate placement or distribution of masks and PPE for the, for the public and to provide signage and I guess in other matters that would help facilitate the, the resolution.
That is a motion. Do you agree to her amendment?
Manager's discretion, is that that thirty thousand dollar cap again or no?
That's exactly what that means, that's a thirty thousand dollar cap.
I'll second that.
Now we have a second. You agree on it, so that is now the motion before us. Any discussion on the motion before us?
So I'm, I'm hearing once again, we're not going to say how much we're going to spend, but we're still going to spend the money and then apply it to buying masks and signs for businesses. Is that what I'm hearing?
Up to thirty thousand.
Up to thirty thousand.
But I don't, I think buying signs for business was not something that was discussed. I think it was putting appropriate signage or examples of appropriate signage available on the website for businesses to print. Yes.
So which is it, a template or we're going to supply them with signs?
The template.
I think we're giving the manager some discretion. Up to $30,000. That's apparently what is the motion on the floor.
I don't know how far $30,000 are going in this arena.
Now we don't have enough.
If, if, if we believe in the masks.
Gotcha.
I'm not going to go back over that point.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on this, on this amendment to the original resolution?
I'm, I'm just not going to support us buying masks and signs for businesses, which is, I think, what it is. Plus, if you buy surgical masks, you got to buy the right ones. They're going to be four filter and surgical and color out, white in, all this other stuff. Yeah. Not going there.
Anyone else?
Well, I, frankly, I disagree with the interpretation of the motion. And I don't think the motion was to buy signage for businesses or even to buy masks for businesses, but to make them available for individuals so that they could follow the resolution of mask usage that we adopted. So I don't think that would be an accurate interpretation of the motion.
I would support the distribution if it was a mandate, but not a resolution.
Let me just call for the question.
I am going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I didn't catch it all. If you, all those who say aye, raise your hand. I just didn't hear. All right, so, all right, there was four. So it passes four to three. Mr. Roddy, I have come back to you now, June 30th, you held a meeting.
Yeah, actually, June 30th, I had to cancel that, that.
Oh, you're right.
Public Works Committee meeting because I got scheduled, I got held over for overtime. But I will assure this council, we will convene before our next meeting.
I like it. Council member new non-agenda comments, I'm going to lead off. Patrick was here, he has left. I want to congratulate our entire engineering team, including Lisa and Patrick, on the excellent work they did on the CIB application. I had the opportunity to go to Columbia and present for them, which literally meant they handed me a two-page document that I read with their hard work on it. And it, because of them, we are going to make significant improvements on interchanges along the I-77 corridor and will have the opportunity to go back in the fall and ask for more. I think we've got 72 million, as I recall off the top of my head. And with the ability to get perhaps another 24 million, that is fantastic work and they should be commended. That is two, two and a half years' worth of hard work and so thank y'all very much.
Can I add something to that?
Go ahead.
I, I agree with you 100%. Patrick does an excellent job, but let's have a reality check. If it wasn't for a certain legislative person from our area on that committee, we'd probably been the same as we've been the past eight years and not gotten what we could have gotten or should have gotten.
Well, I like to think it's all not baked before we get there, but that's all right.
You're wrong. I had throw reality in a little bit.
Go ahead, Mr. Roddy.
I was going to make the point that was this the project at the City of Rock Hill called a press conference and didn't invite us to? But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I was in Fort Mill a couple of days ago and I saw the Baxter, is it Baxter Recycling? Is it still open?
Yes.
I thought we were relocating and getting a whole new thing going. Have we fucked up?
I think we have a year or two left in our lease and then it moves, as I recall off the top of my head. But we purch, I think we're in the process of purchasing, no, no, we're not doing anything, I don't know. But yes, it's got a couple of years left on the lease. Okay. Just wondering. Anybody else have something? All right. Any citizen concerns? No. How about a motion for executive session?
All right. Motion to go into executive session for personnel matter, clerk to council's annual review follow-up from personnel matter and continued representation of outside counsel for Emily Brown. Any personnel matter update on assistant county manager hiring process? Personnel matter update on auditor hiring process? Receipt of legal advice condemnation Penny's project 11149-009, tracks 26, 28 and 29. Receipt of legal advice condemnation project number 15222, tracks 108 and 110 and project number 17260, track six. Contractual matter involving project avalanche. Receipt of legal advice requesting authorization to file suit on three stormwater cases, Palmetto West Reserve at Gold Hill and Mill Creek Farms. And receipt of legal advice and an update on the Morningstar litigation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. Council has exited executive session, are there any motions?
Yes, sir, and I'm going to ask Mr. Kendry to help keep me straight on these. I need to learn as we have these late meetings, I need to take out my bifocal contacts before I come to these meetings and put my glasses on because my vision slowly gets worse that I, where my eyes get tired in the, later in the evening, so. Excuse me. Motion to continue representation of outside counsel Emily Brown until current cases are all concluded.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to approve settlement authority for condemnation Penny's project 11149-009, tracks 26, 28 and 29 as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
Receipt of legal, excuse me, motion to approve settlement authorization for condemnation project number 15222, tracks 10.
No, sir, I'm sorry, I apologize. That's to request condemnation authority to file the proceedings, to commence the condemnation proceedings.
Okay, so, motion to, help me with that one, any motion?
Motion to authorize condemnation proceedings in project.
Okay. Motion to authorize condemnation proceedings in project 15222, tracks 108, 110 and project 17260, track six.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none.
Let's see, motion to authorize county attorney to file suit if necessary on three stormwater cases, Palmetto West Reserve at Gold Hill and Mill Creek Falls.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
And I believe this is the last one. Motion to authorize county attorney to work with HR to revise job descriptions for clerk to counsel to reflect current duties to declassify the position and to adjust compensation as discussed in executive session and.
Second.
Retroactive to the date of her initial review.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. There are motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We are adjourned.